Amenatante seis, na le heslaturn Guam is called to order. We will begin with a prayer. Good morning, everyone. Senator San Augustine, would you kindly lead us in prayer?
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty and ever faithful God, we gratefully acknowledge you as our unseen guest. Your goodness to us here, and we humbly recognize the many ways you have blessed our lives. We pray for your continued guidance and wisdom to be trustworthy stewards, that as we serve our people with hearts full of love, our service may be the love that transcends as service to you. We ask your Mother, Santa Maria and Carmela, to intercede for us and pray. You bless and protect your people and our island with your grace and mercy. As we close this legislative term, we give you thanks for all your blessing upon each of us, our legislative teams and our families. We pray that our vision for a better Guam has mirrored the vision you have for us. We ask all this through your son, Jesus Christ, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of Imaladun Mastakilu Nasakrufisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of Imaladun Mastakilu Nasakrufisu, Senator Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Staff Sergeant David Batanga Kamacho and the family, and Staff Sergeant David Batanga Kamacho for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
For the reciting of the Inafresi, Senator Taitegui will lead us, and with Senator Torres kindly lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn, and Senator Duñez in the singing of the National Anthem.
Gidimis takavu, ginhesoku, imes takilu gi kuresonhu, zani masfigu naninsinyahu, unfrazenmaysitu paripotehi, zani defendi, i hengi, i katura, ilengwahi, i ari, i hanam, i tanin tumoru. Mi grinchokudu ginenestu ustata, esti ufitnia gehilu ibiblia, zani barindahu, itan barindahu Guam.
Itanota pantaimatu nanya gitorui lu gar. Parai onra, parai gloria, apiba islasen para. Parai onra, parai gloria, apiba islasen para. Todui tempo ipas parahita, zangeni laengedabedishal. Kontra pili gru, napfaham safoham, jus protei island Guam. Kontra pili gru, napfaham safoham, jus protei island Guam. Oh, see, can you see, why the dawn to the light was so proudly wheeled, and the twilightless gleam whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous side, or around what we watch were so gallant these streams? And the rock is trembling upon thirsty air, gate blue through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, see, does that starstrangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
You be seated, and Clerk, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Moylan. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rogel. Senator San Augustine. Senator Shelton. Senator Taitegui. Senator Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized on the Legislative Journal.
Madam Speaker, I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated October 21st, 2022, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the Legislative Journal, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga Hagan Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion to append reports of standing committees, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are no report of select committees.
Thank you. Majority Leader, you are recognized on first reading.
Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced to Bill numbers 343-36COR through 345-36COR, 346-36LS through 350-36LS, and 351-36COR through 363-36COR, and resolutions introduced, resolution numbers 454-36COR through 456-36COR, 457-36LS through 467-36LS, and 486-36COR through 479-36COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion regarding first reading of bills and resolutions, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on motions. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse senators not present for today's legislative session.
On the motion to excuse senators, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of the legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 254-36COR, which is an act to add to a new chapter to Division 2 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, relative to defining the educational and professional requirements for the certified school counselors and to authorize the compiler of law to make changes. And we do have a substituted on the floor.
All right, we'll take the motion to place the bill on the floor. The clerk has on the drive attached to our legislative session agenda is the potential items to be placed on agenda. And on her list, she has provided links to those that have been uploaded. And so, Bill number 254... Senator Nelson, I don't see that bill as linked yet.
It should be in there, Madam Speaker. We sent it yesterday.
It's not been uploaded.
Okay, well, I have the original copy here. If we could take a quick recess so I can hand them out.
We'll take a recess. The bill has not been uploaded yet by the Committee on Rules. That means it hasn't been cleared.
So it's not on the website?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll move on. I'll table that till next... I'll move on to the next bill that I'd like to add.
Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 291-36LS to the session agenda, which is an act to add a new chapter, 91 Bravo, to Division 4 of Title 10, the Guam Code Annotated, relative to abortion, including abortions after detection of an unborn child's heartbeat, authorizing a private civil right of action.
On that motion, is there any objection to add Bill number... There's an objection. On the motion to add Bill number 291-36 to the session agenda... There have been three calls for roll call. Clerk, please take roll call. The question is, shall Bill number 291-36 be added to the session agenda? Clerk, please take roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to excuse senators not present for this.
On the motion to excuse senators not present, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Senator Moylan excused. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taitegui. Senator Taitegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Correction. Speaker Terlahi, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
Bill number 291-36 received eight votes to be placed on the session agenda, so motion carries. We're still on motions. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 292-36LS, which was an act to amend subsections 73203, subsection 3204, and subsection 73205 of Article 2, Chapter 73, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to charges for carrier off-duty services of customs and quarantine officers, and to further establish a customs carrier off-duty services customs administrative processing fee.
Senator Nelson, I'm not seeing that on our list either. I'm going to take a one-minute recess to confirm with the Committee on Rules. One-minute recess. Madam Speaker, I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated October 21st, 2022, subject to corrections. On the motion to approve the Legislative Journal, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 292-36LS, which was an act to amend subsections 73203, subsection 3204, and subsection 73205 of Article 2, Chapter 73, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to charges for carrier off-duty services of customs and quarantine officers, and to further establish a customs carrier off-duty services customs administrative processing fee.
Senator Nelson, I don't see that on our list either. I'm going to take a one-minute recess to confirm with the Committee on Rules. One-minute recess. Senator Nelson, I don't see that on our list either. I'm going to take a one-minute recess to confirm with the Committee on Rules. One-minute recess. Senator Nelson, I don't see that on our list either. I'm going to take a one-minute recess to confirm with the Committee on Rules. One-minute recess. We will proceed. Senator Nelson, do you have any other motions? Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, if you give me one second, please. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guam, I again move to place vetoed Bill 239-36COR in the voting file, and I respectfully ask to speak briefly on the motion.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The title of the vetoed bill is number 239-36COR, which is an act to add a new 76206 to Article 2 of Chapter 76, Division 3, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new 1351 to Article 5 of Chapter 13, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the business license requirements for entities engaging in child replacement services. Vetoed Bill 239-36COR is sponsored by myself and co-sponsored by Senator Joanne Brown, Speaker Treece Terlahi, and Senator Sabina Perez. Madam Speaker, I offer this final override motion during our last regular session of the 36 Guam Legislature, requesting the support of my colleagues in approving Bill 239-36. Notwithstanding the governor's objections, Madam Speaker, may the legislative record reflect the fact that Guam remains without a set of rules and regulations for the licensures of private adoption companies, notwithstanding the possible adoption of the draft rules Public Health submitted to this legislature months ago, recognizing Bill 334-36 as a potential item for this month's session. We should not continue to ignore the need to override veto Bill 239-36. Madam Speaker, Guam does not have interim or any other duly adopted set of rules in place right now, which makes you wonder why in the world would our government allow a private adoption company to have a business license and operate without such rules and regulations? Madam Speaker, I respectfully urge my colleagues to move past the politics that have somehow controlled the conversation and discussions as such a critical public safety issue for almost this entire legislative term. I urge my colleagues to step up and override Bill 239-36 so that one of the final decisions we make during this 36 Guam Legislature ensures that once a set of draft or permanent licensure rules and regulations are adopted, Guam will have already established the administrative guardrails in law through a clear and critical business license review process and partnership between Revantax and Public Health. By overriding vetoed Bill 239, we will finally put the safety, health, and welfare of our most vulnerable children ahead of politics. Madam Speaker.
Senator, is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the motion on vetoed Bill 239? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I once again rise in support of Bill 239. I certainly won't belabor it. I know the sponsor of the bill has elaborated for the umpteenth time the significance and importance of putting rules and regulations in place for adoption agencies on Guam. I'm hopeful that with the exit of some members of this legislature and the incoming members in the new legislature, that they will be far more open to addressing this issue without much effort. I'm fairly confident the sponsor will probably have this as her very first bill that she will introduce in the new legislature. But yes, for the record, I think in this particular issue, this is very much the evidence of what politics looks like. Its face is not very pretty, especially when we know that this is something that we should take care of. I mean, we're arguing the importance of other types of rules and regulations to be put in place for other needs in the community. I mean, as I mentioned, I mean, the people that do our nails and our hair and all these other things have to be licensed, but when it comes to addressing licensing, adoption agencies on Guam, we seem to have a political hesitancy to do so because we don't like the sponsor of the bill. And that's the kind of nonsense I think the people at Guam really don't want to see. I think they want to see responsible legislation by their elected officials. And so I'm optimistic and looking forward, Madam Speaker, to voting for the new version. I'm sure it'll be the same version. The only thing that will change is the bill number in the next legislature so that this legislation will finally be put in place. With that, thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill 239.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion regarding the vetoed Bill 239, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor may close. Senator Rijal, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I voted against this bill initially. I also voted against the multiple attempts of overriding it. Let me just explain why. And I'll read from the Governor's veto message. The Governor's veto message itself says, "The operative language of Bill Number 239-36 does not impose any requirement on a prospective adoption agency that does not already exist in Guam law. Under existing law, before the Department of Revenue and Taxation can issue a business license to a business subject to Department of Public Health and Social Services regulation, that business must provide proof to DRT that DPHSS has approved their license. In addition, the veto message states, 'Despite the sponsor touting the support of DPHSS and the DRT during the bill's deliberation, neither agency has supported this amended version.'" Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place, to consider the veto of Bill 239, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the override of the veto of Bill 239-36. You know, Madam Speaker, I sat and I listened to many of the deliberations as this thing comes up time and time again, and pretty much stomped as to what's the issue with it? What this basically requires is that if you're going to get a license to be able to operate an adoptive agency on this island, that you must then, there are full rules and regulations that you have to abide by. You know, it's kind of interesting that over the last several weeks, we've heard testimony, public hearings, and different other bills that require many other areas, many other disciplines that want to do business on this island, and the requirement that they have to go, they have to get, you know, follow the rules and the regulations. There have to be a set of rules and regulations for their licenses to be considered. But yet, when we come to this, where it comes to the licensure of an adoptive agency, we don't seem to want to have that. I'm a little confused here. And almost to the point where, is it politics that's standing in the way of this, or is there another legitimate reason? I don't see any harm in this bill, in this requirement of adoptive agencies that want to set up a shop on Guam for adoption, to have to abide by rules and regulations that need to be set up. If that were the case, then why are we requiring, why is there a move to put together rules and regulations? So that we can just say we have it, we put it on the bookshelf, and just in case we need to, because if the sky falls or something happens, then we can refer to that? But yet, we don't require these agencies, these entities, to abide by it before they get their licenses? It doesn't make sense, colleagues. It doesn't make sense. You know, and despite the Governor's, in her message, her veto message about its non-necessity because of existing rules and regulations, what are they? All this simply asks for these entities to do is to follow what every other entity with every other profession needs to do here on Guam. That's what it is. You know, if we require this of cosmetologists, acupuncturists, chiropractors, veterinarians, foster homes, why can't we require this of adoptive agencies? What's the harm? The harm is if we don't do this, we jeopardize, we could jeopardize the life, the safety, and the welfare of those adoptive children. Now, could I be going over on the edge in being able to make that remark? I hope it never happens. But what this legislation would provide if it were to become law is it doesn't happen. That's why, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues, please reconsider the actions. Reconsider your actions if you voted no. This is for the safety of our children. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I worry sometimes when there's so much information that is not entirely accurate. And I just want to point out, notwithstanding the personal references and comments made which, about the need to override this, I want to point out to the body, as you think about whether to support the override veto, we have on our list of potential items, Bill Number 334-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. This bill is an act to add a new Article 3A to Chapter 1, Division 1 of Title 26 GCA, which is relative to the adoption of rules and regulations for child placement agencies. Madam Speaker, I had legislation that was signed into public law that required the promulgation of rules and regulations for child placement agencies, which includes adoption agencies. Notwithstanding the fact that Guam law highly regulates the adoptions of children, and no agency or person or entity can skirt Guam law and conduct an illegal adoption. But notwithstanding that, I just want to bring up the point to the body that on our list of potential items, which I expect will be moved into the agenda, is Bill Number 334-36, which is exactly what we're, which is exactly what was noted as a missing gap, which is the adoption of rules and regulations for child placement agencies. In fact, my bill accomplished that, another bill, and Bill 334 brings that process whole. So it is not true that they will be operating without rules once 334 is passed. And notwithstanding that, there are rules in Guam Code Annotated with regard to the regulation of adoptions of children on Guam. So it is, there are lawful processes already. But I just want to clear that misnomer, that they're operating without and that we're doing nothing about it, and in fact, we have been quietly and diligently and without offending anybody, we have been. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On that motion, are there any others who would like to be recognized? On the same motion? So if not, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'll make this very short. You know, I've been advocating this for this whole entire term, to try and put some rules and regulations in place. We do have rules and regulations in place for adopting children, but do we have rules and regulations in place for people coming to Guam, opening up an adoption agency? No, we don't. That's what was missing in the equation. This body needs to stop being reactive and start being proactive. Do we have to experience the same situation that happened in the Marshall Islands, where there were human trafficking there? When a person came in to the Marshall Islands, opened up a company, and later on found out they were selling babies? Do we need to have something like that happen to us before we start doing something? This is about being proactive. Many times, we were talking about how it's important to have rules and regulations. I've been advocating this because it hasn't been in place. Now, the bill that hopefully gets on this session agenda and passed by this body, which we thought we were going to do it last session, and even before that, hopefully it'll get passed. But just in case it doesn't, by placing this on the voting file, the third reading file, to vote on it, just in case it doesn't get through. What do they say? It's best to be safe than sorry? This is even more than that. This is our children on this island, who don't have a family to go to, and the worst thing we can do is put them in a situation that harms them even more. Can you sleep at night because of that? Can you sleep at night knowing that you had an opportunity to make a difference, to protect our children? This is that opportunity. And I pray. I pray that Bill 334 gets through, because it's been long awaited, almost two years. But shame on us for passing the ability for anybody to come on this island and open up an adoption agency without any rules and regulations in place, and this body actually did that. Shame on us for doing that. So I ask, please, let's put another safety mechanism in place and put this bill on the veto file, I mean, the voting file, to override the Governor's veto. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place vetoed Bill 239 on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Are there any other motions? Sorry, Senator Torres? Oh. On the, we're still on motions. Is there any other motion? Senator Torres, you are recognized. And then Senator Perez.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 299-36LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture on the session agenda. Bill 299-36LS is an act to add a new Section 13301.1, 13301.2, and to amend Section 133208 through F and 13324, all of Article 3, Chapter 13, Title 19 Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Section 4303B6 and 7, and 4303D of Article 3, Chapter 4, Title 19 Guam Code Annotated. This is relative to requiring reasonable efforts to preserve and reunify families, and to establishing circumstances negating requirement for such reasonable efforts, updating disposition hearing requirements, updating the timelines for the permanent placement of children, and terminating the parental rights of a parent who subjects a child to aggravated circumstances.
On that motion to place Bill Number 299-36LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, onto the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motion. Senator Perez, you are recognized. And then Senator Turli. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Arlene P. Bernalia to serve as a member of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission onto the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
I move to place Bill 334-36 onto the session agenda. It's an act to add a new Article 3A to Chapter 1, Division 1, Title 26 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to the adoption of rules and regulations for child placement agencies.
On that motion to place Bill Number 334-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, onto the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 355-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning. It's an act to amend Section 5007 of Subarticle A, Article 1, Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to amending the exemption to the policy against advanced payments to include the Guam Public Library system.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator De La Hye, you are recognized.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 346-36LS on the session agenda. Bill Number 346-36LS is an act to amend Section 8502 and 8503 of Article 5, Chapter 8, Title 4 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the defined benefit 1.75 retirement system.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On motion, Senator Rijal, you are recognized. Senator Rijal, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Dr. Doreen Crisasta Mamunia to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, onto the session agenda.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Rijal, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Ernesto V. Espaldón Jr. to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, onto the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Rijal, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 351-36COR, as amended in committee, an act to add a new Article 6 to Chapter 8 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a virtual power plant program, onto the session agenda.
Thank you, Senator Rijal. That bill's currently not showing as being cleared through COR or uploaded. 351-36COR.
Okay, Madam Speaker. If it's not been cleared through COR, I will wait and make that motion later, once it's cleared COR. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, thank you. Are there any other motions? We're still under motions. Are there any other motions? If not, then we are in legislative concurrences. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, the nomination Health, Land Justice, and Culture the nomination of Arlene P. Bordalio to serve as a member of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission with a recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Under legislative concurrents, Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts the nomination of Dr. Doreen Crisostomamunia to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now under, oh, sorry. Senator Rigel, you're recognized, under legislative concurrences.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts the nomination of Ernesto V. Espaldón to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We've exhausted legislative concurrence. We're now on consent calendar. There are no items, so we will move on to the second reading file. First bill on our second reading file is Bill number 219-36LS. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to set Bill 219 aside at this time.
There's a motion to set Bill 219-36LS aside. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number 306-36COR. Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Howdy and good morning, colleagues. Bill 306-36 introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Chris Duennas, Senator Jim Moylan, and as amended by the Committee on Agricultural, Economic Development, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts, is an act to amend section 58104K and 58136 of Article 1 and to add a new Article 3 to Chapter 58 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the issuance of qualifying certificates to captive insurance companies who wholly underwrite insurance risks outside of Guam. Since 1997, regulatory framework for captive insurance has been set in place, but it did not persuade insurance companies domiciling Guam to enter the captive insurance endeavor due to high financial risk. This legislation will provide a vital captive insurance industry that has potential to bring millions of dollars to Guam and to offer the means that will foster the development of an expanded financial service industry in our island, resulting in elevating our presence in the international financial community without affecting existing tax base. With special tax benefits set in place, it will surely attract national and international investors. The specific tax benefit that captive insurance companies who wholly underwrite insurance risks outside of Guam will receive 100% rebate of corporate income tax for a period of 20 years, consecutive years from the effective date of the QC, 100% rebate of the income tax withheld from the shareholders of an insurance underwriting business on dividends from such business for a period of 20 consecutive years from the effective date of the QC, an abatement of business privilege tax for a period of 20 years from the effective date of the QC. Also, this QC does not pose any threat to our existing insurance industry. This legislation in place will increase the investment on Guam and the potential for our island to become a hub for Asian companies to enter our captive insurance industry, which will result in a more diversified economy. I ask for affirmative support of my colleagues on this as it promotes economic diversification. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Just a point of inquiry. The sponsor of the bill explained why the captive insurance excludes underwriters for insurance risks on Guam.
Would the sponsor yield to the question? Would the senator please repeat the question? Senator Perez.
Yeah, so in the bill, it states that it does not include insurance companies that are underwriting insurance, captive insurance on, for service, for people on Guam or businesses on Guam. Can the author of the bill explain why that was included in the bill?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If I'm correct, the question was why it excludes insurance companies in Guam? And if that's the intent of the question, none of them want to do it. These companies want to get captive the insurance for themselves and protect their own companies. None of the insurance are offering it. That's why we're basically trying to attract companies to come to Guam and do their captive insurance here, for the companies they specifically asked for. Otherwise, the insurance company would be, we wouldn't have to do this.
Senator Perez, you are recognized. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close. Bill 306.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The bill essentially aims to expand the qualifying certificate law to establish a special QC, provide incentive with the creation of a captive insurance companies whose insurance risks are wholly located off island. This legislation provides authorization for specific tax benefit and guidelines to create an organized and efficient program that will allow Guam to become an attractive destination for captive insurance compared to other markets. Furthermore, nurturing the captive insurance industry on our island will stimulate prosperity and positive impacts to our people as it will provide employment, business, and commerce. Diversifying our economy is what we need now as we are in the road to recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, I humbly ask for affirmative votes on this measure. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On the motion to, I'm sorry. So on the motion to place Bill number 306-36COR as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities, and the Arts on to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Continuing with our second reading agenda items, we are now on Bill number 312-36COR. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 312-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture, which is introduced by myself and Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Christopher Remduenas, Jose Pedro Terlai, Talina Cruz Nelson, James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sinagustin, Amanda L. Shelton, and Sabina Flores Perez into the third reading file. This is an act to amend section 40103 and section 40105 of Article 1, Chapter 40, Title 7, Guam Code Annotated, relative to expanding necessary protections for victims of abuse to maintain the safety and basic needs of the victim or the minor child or children in common with the defendant. And I wish to speak on the measure further.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Earlier this year, lawmakers learned some disturbing news about domestic violence on Guam. Under our lethality assessment program with the Office of the Attorney General, victims who contact the Guam Police Department are always asked a series of questions to determine the risks to their safety, questions such as, have they threatened to kill you? Have they tried to kill you? Have they threatened to kill themselves or you and your children? And according to the Office of the Attorney General, 70% of the victims in these calls said yes to the first five questions and to any three of the remaining six questions. Of these high-risk individuals, 2/3 of them identified that the perpetrator used other means to control who they talked to and where they went. And that is what makes this bipartisan bill so important. As too many of us are aware, victims are often forced to remain in abusive relationships because they simply cannot afford to leave. Bill 312 would help address this by providing immediate economic relief for these individuals. It does this by preventing abusers from cutting off some of the most basic needs of victims, including housing, automobile use, utilities, health insurance, child support, and other necessary services. For example, if Bill 312 was enacted, it would permit a victim to stay in the home if she desires, even if the home is owned by the perpetrator. The court can also require the abuser to continue making payments on the home, on the insurance or the car, instead of placing her and her children in a shelter and potentially revictimizing her, which was an unfortunate effect that Ms. Jane Flores, Director of the Bureau of Women's Affairs, testified to at the public hearing. But Madam Speaker, in addition to the Bureau of Women's Affairs, Bill 312 garnered strong support from the Office of the Attorney General. Based on the latter's testimony, my office worked with your committee to further strengthen the bill. According to the Attorney General Camacho, and he stated, "One of the silver linings of the pandemic is the ability for victims to call in or via video conference or telephonic means. Victims would be a lot more willing to participate if they didn't have to worry about parking in the court or getting escorted into the courtroom or having to face either family abuse, stalking, or sexual assault." So using the language from Oregon's Protective Order Statute, as the AG recommended, Bill 312 was amended to make these proceedings more accessible to victims. As a result of this bill were to become law, a victim would be able to request participation by telephone, video conferencing, or other two-way electronic communication device. The court would also have to consider the victim's safety or welfare if testimony were required in person. Bill 312 as amended also makes clear that these temporary provisions do not intend to replace the legal processes for support, custody, or divorce that would follow. Madam Speaker, I realize that a protection order will not remedy all ills. We know that family violence is a longstanding issue plaguing our island, and successful intervention will require a comprehensive approach that includes proper training, enforcement, and community education. But still, a protection order is more than just a piece of paper. As Attorney Daniel Summerfleck, the Executive Director of the Guam Legal Services Corporation, testified, it provides a means of survival without the victim's perpetrator. I'd like to thank my 10 cosponsors for supporting this measure, and I intend to add all of the legislatures as cosponsors of this important measure at the appropriate time. And I thank you and your committee, Madam Chair, for your diligent work on this, and I sincerely hope that we can move this forward to help achieve the safety, but more importantly, the stability for survivors on Guam. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator Torres. On Bill number 312. Bill 312, on the bill. Senator Torres, would you like to close?
Thank you. I look forward to the successful passage of this bill, as does many in our community. It is a gap that has been brought up as one of the critical gaps that oftentimes revictimizes victims and their children. So providing the economic relief oftentimes is the lifeline for these people who are victims of assault or crimes of domestic violence. And with that, I'd like to move to add the remaining of the senators who were not initially on the list as cosponsors. Clerk, is it okay if I don't mention them, or must I mention them? Or Madam Speaker?
Thank you. On the motion to add all senators as cosponsors to the bill.
No need to change the order. I just want to make sure that the Speaker is on, and Senators Brown and Titegui and Rigel are on.
Yes.
Thank you.
On the motion to add cosponsors, hearing no objection, motion passes. We are now, we are still in the second reading file. We are now on Bill number 313-36COR. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey. I move to place Bill number 313-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture, which is introduced by myself and Senators Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Christopher Remduenas, Jose Pedro Terlai, Talina Cruz Nelson, James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sinagustin, Amanda L. Shelton, Sabina Flores Perez into the third reading file. This is an act to add a new Chapter 40A to Title 7 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing a protection order for a person who is a victim of non-consensual sexual contact or non-consensual sexual penetration. And I wish to speak on the measure further, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Please proceed.
Sisus Massey. I introduce this measure in response to concerns raised by the Office of the Attorney General earlier in the year. At a public hearing held by your committee in April, Deputy Attorney General Nishihara noted that, according to local service providers, victims of sexual assault are not eligible to use a protective order process under current law. That's because, under Guam's Protection from Abuse statute, which is 7GCA 40101, only a person alleging specific acts of abuse, such as bodily injury, attempting to cause bodily injury, fear of bodily injury, or sexual abuse of a minor, may be granted court-ordered protection from their offender. These challenges, these standards have made it very challenging for victims of other forms of abuse to obtain a stay-away order through the legal system. Former prosecutor and head of Guam's Family and Sex Crimes Unit, Attorney Christine Tenorio, echoed the same concern during the hearing, stating that it is more difficult for a sexual assault victim to get a restraining order on Guam. According to Attorney Tenorio, and she states, "The courts are looking for physical injury." You would think that a sexual assault equates to physical injury, but that's not really how the courts interpret that. And so to resolve this, Bill 313 authorizes a separate protection order for a victim of non-consensual sexual contact or penetration as defined in 9GCA Chapter 25. And under the bill, no fees for filing or service or process may be charged by a public agency to petitioners seeking relief. Petitioners shall also be provided the necessary number of certified copies at no cost to them. And in keeping with our recently enacted mental incapacitation law, the court cannot deny a remedy based on evidence that the victim was intoxicated. Further, if the court finds that the perpetrator's conduct involved the use or threatened use of violence with a firearm, the court may order the perpetrator to surrender all firearms and other dangerous weapons to prevent potential further harm to themselves or the victim. Madam Speaker, following the public hearing, my office worked with your committee to make the proceeding under this bill more accessible to victims, more accessible to victims. And like Bill 312, a victim would be able to request participation by telephone or video conferencing or other two-way electronic communication device. The court would also have to consider the victim's safety or welfare if testimony were required in person. Other recommendations by our legal counsel were also included to ensure that the proceedings align with civil rules of procedure and that all parties are provided notification to enforce the protection order. In closing, Madam Speaker, I believe Attorney Summerfleck stated it best when he was testifying on Bill 313-36. He stated that this is a bill that helps victims of sexual assault, but more so... but more so, this is a bill that says, 'These are the standards.' It creates a paradigm shift in our community, and I believe it's long overdue," unquote. I certainly agree with him, and I look forward to bringing this law, this bill, one step closer to law. And again, I intend, Madam Speaker, to include all of the senators as cosponsors on this paradigm shift legislation. Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. On Bill number 313-36COR. On the bill. 313-36. Senator Torres, would you like to close?
Thank you, colleagues. Your silence I take as a resounding vote of support for this bill, and I sincerely thank you. I also invite you and others to read the committee report because it was a very good narrative and discussion by practitioners who have been in the legal system representing such victims and defendants for decades, and it gives a good idea and a backdrop of why these bills are so long overdue and why they were so sought after and why it garnered so much support from our colleagues going on. And at this time, I'd like to place, I'd like to move to add the remaining senators to the list of cosponsors, beginning with Speaker, Senator Brown, Senator Titegui, and Senator Rigel.
Thank you. On the motion to add cosponsors to Bill 313-36, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes.
And I move to place this on the third reading voting.
On the motion to place Bill number 313-36 to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Senator Torres, can we just go back to Bill number 313-36, 312-36 for a motion to place in the voting file?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I recognize that I may have jumped that in my previous. So I move, I'd like to go back and reconsider the motion in 312 and move to place Bill number 312-36COR as amended onto the third reading voting file.
On the motion to place Bill number 312-36COR as amended onto the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes.
Proceeding with the second reading file, we are now on Bill number 314-36COR. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 314-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture, which was introduced by myself and Senators Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Christopher M. Duñez, Jose Pito Terlahi, Talina Cruz Nelson, James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sinagustin, Amanda L. Shelton, and Sabina Flores Perez into the third reading file. This is an act to add a new Chapter 40B to Title VII Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing a stalking protection order for victims of stalking. And I wish to speak on the matter further.
Please proceed.
Sisus Massey. Bill 314 recognizes that stalking victims require the same protection and judicial access as domestic violence and sexual assault victims. According to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, stalking impacts 3.4 million people in the United States every year, and of those stalked, almost 75% know their stalker. The statistics aren't much better here on Guam. According to Attorney Daniel Sommerfleck, the Executive Director of the Guam Legal Services Center, and he states, "Stalking is a very common occurrence in our community." He stated that, based on his experience, and I quote, "There are numerous situations where individuals are intentionally stalking, and they make their presence known. They drive by the house four or five times each day, honking their horns with the deliberate intention of intimidating or creating fear with the increased use of electronic media, with texting, with other aspects." And he continues, "This provides protection to victims where there is not that physical abuse element. Often, if there are no threats, there's very little I can do to assist a victim. But with this legislation, that ends. By putting this in place, we prevent further violence," unquote. Madam Speaker, data shows that stalking can often escalate to other crimes perpetrated against victims. A federal report indicated that over 35% of stalking victims or their loved ones were physically attacked by their stalker, while 24% had property damage. And these are all from Bureau of Justice Statistics. To help prevent further violence, Bill 314 creates a separate protection order for a person who is a victim of stalking as defined in 9 Guam Code Annotated, Section 19.70. The measure makes clear that stalking conduct may be physical, verbal, written, electronic, telephonic, via use of a computer, computer network, computer system, telephone network, data network, text message, instant message, or otherwise. And like Bill 313, the bill was amended to permit participation by telephone, video conferencing, or other two-way electronic communication device, and incorporates other recommendations by our legal counsel. I want to especially acknowledge and thank Attorney Sommerfleck's comments during the hearing regarding the potential impact this could have on the court marshals, who serve a critical role in our justice system. While we did not receive any testimony from the judiciary indicating anything greater than, in their words, miniscule impact, fiscal impact on their operations, I'm certain that any additional cost will be duly considered by the judicial branch in its further or future budget requests. Again, Madam Speaker, I don't claim a protection order will solve all of our problems, but I do believe that the testimony of one of our legal experts brings the importance of Bill 314-36 to light. As Attorney Sommerfleck stated, "I don't know of anything stronger. I don't know of anything that causes more respect, and I don't know of anything more enforceable. I have taken numerous defendants in contempt for violating court orders." It does change the paradigm. It is very effective deterrent. Again, I thank my cosponsors for their support, and I thank you, Madam Speaker, for your committee's work on this, and I look forward to advancing this very much needed policy. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. On Bill number 314-36COR, is there any senator who would like to be If not, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe that together all of these measures, 312-36, 313-36, and 314-36, close a gap in our protection order process, one that has excluded victims of sexual assault and stalking and other heinous crimes made against them. By making these critical changes that were recommended by Guam's legal advocates, we not only provide victims protection from their offenders, but hopefully we provide them a peace of mind that can go towards their healing and recovery. And I'd like to also move to add to the list of cosponsors yourself, Speaker, Terlahi, Senators Brown, Titegui, and Rigel. And I also, on that motion.
Motion to add sponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
And I further moved to place Bill 314-36COR as amended on the third reading voting file.
On the motion to place the bill on the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senators, we're now on Bill number 257-36LS. The next three bills are bills that require committee of the whole. So we're going to recess until 2:00 PM and then go into committee of the whole for the three, committee of the whole bills. So recess until 2:00 PM.